Okay. Welcome, everyone, to your city council meeting, January 18. They just all blend together at this point. Six P M., and we'll have one tomorrow night. So, we're going, this is a joint council meeting with the Planning Commission and Parking and Public Improvements Commission. Rolls right off the tongue. We're going to call them into order, and if you'll rise with me, we'll pledge to the flag. It's going to be led by Martha.
I pledge allegiance to our life of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Holworth?
Here.
Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Mayor Proton Montgomery is not on the call yet. And Mayor Napolotano?
Here.
All right, and you're going to do the other roll calls now?
For the planning commissioners, Commissioner Sisto is absent. Commissioner De La Vos absent. Commissioner Ungoko?
Here.
Commissioner Tokashiki?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Thank you.
And for the P P I C, Alan Kirschenbaum?
Here.
George Apostol is virtual. Kathleen Peralas is not here at this moment. Stephen Tomico is not present. And Bob Jijao?
Here.
Thank you.
So why is everyone missing? Why, why did we set this meeting if everyone can't make it? Seems like a majority of our commissioners aren't here.
We have a commissioner who's out on maternity leave currently. That's one of our planning commissioners.
Okay.
And I recently found out that Commissioner De La Vos would not be here this evening, so I have not assessed that situation.
The others let us know ahead of time that they couldn't make it?
I'm not sure about the P P I C commission. I only know about the planning commission.
And we learned from Jim couldn't make it when?
Before posting the agenda. But for the P P I C, Mr. Apostol, for our opposition, was going to be through Zoom, and then I'm not sure about the other commissioners. They're not here.
Okay. Glad we're having a joint meeting. Go ahead. What are we doing, approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances? Do we have any full reading of ordinances tonight? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda and waiver of full reading? We don't have any ordinances? We have a motion by Councilor Lesser, saying by Councilor Holworth. We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Mayor, you could do electronically, since Mayor Proton Montgomery's not here.
We don't have a voting screen.
There we go.
Okay, please vote.
Motion passes. For?
That takes us to public comments. Those are, public comments are three minutes per person. Anyone who wants to address the council, anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or the council, come on down. All right, seeing anyone by Zoom? Nobody by Zoom. Someone's coming down the stairs now. That is an employee. Okay. All right, moving on from public comments, then, we will go to our general business item, which is consider approving the annual work plans for the Parking and Public Improvements Commission and Planning Commission.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members and commissioners. Thank you for being here this evening. The city's Boards and Commissions handbook requires that the city council and the P P I C commission, as well as the planning commission, get together annually and discuss the items on both commissions' work plan. Both of the commissions are tasked with items that are regulatory in nature and generally mandated by state and local codes. The, the commissions also provide direction on policy matters to the city council. And so, this evening, our task is to assess the various items on the work plans of both of the commissions, discuss, obtain direction from the council, prioritize the items, as well as discuss whether or not any additional funding is necessary to complete any of these tasks. And with that, I wanted to just introduce the format of this meeting. It'll be slightly different than what you experienced last week. The planning commission and the P P I C do have a lot of items on the work plan that are integrated. And so, what we'll do is we'll start with a couple of the work plan items that are on the P P I C's work plan, and then we'll move into the integrated items, and then we'll follow through with the planning commission items. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric Zanvleed, our city traffic engineer, and he'll take, he'll take you through the first couple of items for the P P I C.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Eric Zanvleed, the city traffic engineer, again. The first item, first work plan item that the public, the Parking and Public Improvements Commission is involved in is the downtown and north end beautification project. It is a C I P project and was first reviewed through, with, through the C I P process, which they review annually as well. The P P I C can provide input on this project related to infrastructure improvements, either in the north end or in the downtown area, such as new landscaping, widened sidewalks, which is a planned idea, street benches, wayfinding signs, placement of those. It offers a, also a forum for public input at the P P I C meeting itself. The second item is the long-term outdoor dining and business use program. We talked a lot about that last night. It includes both public and private property areas, and the P P I C has one member on the task force. The P P I C will be used as, also as a forum for public input. It's also a chance for them to provide their guidance in, in, in the establishment of the permanent program. This is one of those integrated projects with the planning commission, which will also be reviewing regulatory type of needs, such as modifying the local coastal program or zoning code amendments that might be needed for that, as well as C Q A. The next item is the modernizing, the parking standards, work plan item. This was generated out of the Sepulveda Corridor Action and that task force. It took a little hiatus during the pandemic, but we are, we have a draft new ordinance for our parking standards, which includes just the parking requirements themselves for different land uses, as well as all the other policy items that are in the parking section of the zoning code. That will be taken to the planning commission for their review in the spring. And then it will be as a work, as a study session, and then to both commissions after that for the review of the final draft. At that point, those recommendations from both of those commissions will go to the city council for approval of the ordinance to change that parking standard. Okay, and I'm going to hand this back over to Talin to talk about.
Can I ask a question first, though?
Yes.
How many meetings were canceled last year?
With regard to the P P I C? I believe six.
Six meetings were canceled? How many meetings were held?
About every other month, we had a meeting.
So, six?
Yes.
Okay. And then, planning commission, how many meetings were canceled?
I, I would say six as well, but then we also did have some special meetings to discuss some of these state, state-driven efforts. So although we did have some cancellations, we also added a couple of special meetings, as well as some study sessions.
Thank you.
Okay. Just for my colleagues, I'd say, I've noticed this, in fact, we got notices today that the P P I C and planning commission meetings were canceled. I mean, it seems, and since there is overlap, I mean, I do wonder out loud whether or not we need two commissions, rather than having something like a seven-member planning commission that does Planning and Public Works Commission.
The duties, duties are dictated by the municipal code, so we would have to evaluate what each commission is responsible for, and then figure out how, how we could potentially combine into a single commission. But the, the, the duties of each commission are dictated by the municipal code, and there is some overlap.
We change municipal code every meeting, so I get it. But, and then the other question I guess I would have is, how many absences do we have over the last year? For commissions?
I, I'll speak for the planning commission. The planning commissioners have been really good about attendance, and anytime we have had an absence, it has been an excused absence.
Okay. Any unexcused absences from P P I C?
Only one or two, and we've always had a quorum when we do hold a meeting.
All right. We're not going to take questions right now. We're not there. Okay.
I had a question.
You had a question. Councilor Holworth?
Yeah, thank you. Under the, for the P P I C and the downtown and north end beautification, you know, provide input on projects in the C I P. Will some of these items move over into the outdoor dining uses task force? Because when we talk about sidewalk widening, that could also impact the downtown dining. So, is there work being done on that? And this, this is a staff level, because, I mean, this is in some ways your work plan on top of your daily capacity. But are y'all kind of looking at it holistically and trying to make sure that some work isn't proceeding in one area, and then it's going to be completely redone by the task force recommendations?
Right, that's a very good question, because potentially, there would be overlap between both, both projects. So we're making sure that that's not going to happen. So as far as streetscape type of improvements that are infrastructure improvements, that will need, need to be coordinated with the long-term outdoor dining program. And the downtown and north end beautification is more of a beautification of existing infrastructure.
Okay. I mean, because I see sidewalk widening, and I, I think, oh, let's not get too far ahead of ourselves.
And, and again, the beautification project was created, the work plan item was created before the long-term dining, and so.
But so hopefully, we put a hold on that so that we, gotcha. All right.
Yes.
Satisfied, thank you.
Councilor Franklin?
Yes, and so, in the long-term outdoor dining section, in the write-up in the staff report, it said the planning commission and P P I C have selected representatives for the task force. Is that one per?
Yes, that's correct. One.
Okay.
And, and then they also voted for an alternate to make sure that there was someone there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilor Lesser?
Picking up on the mayor's point, last night, during the discussion of outdoor dining, we talked about, as a council, how to expedite the contemplation of what a proposal might be. Might there be opportunities for both commissions to meet together if we really are interested in expediting this proposal? I recognize, having served on both commissions, that they have different functions. One, in fact, is under state law, as well as our municipal code. But I'm just wondering, given that we've just heard through Councilmember Holworth's question, that there are certain overlap, if we really want to expedite, might that not provide an opportunity for joint meetings?
Sure. Without having looked into the, the details and, and any bylaws, I will say that I don't see any impediments to potentially hosting a special meeting that would include both commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to some of the items our planning commission is tasked with. And these are mainly state-driven policy efforts, and of course, the, the planning commission is a recommending body, and they would bring forward to the city council recommendations on these items. So, as a part, as, for the last few years, we have been working on the housing element update, which the council is generally familiar with. And with, that is a big item with this particular work plan, and we have not completed that yet. We're still working with the, we're still working with H C D and trying to get past the last few hurdles. We received the latest comment letter from them on just November 22nd, and we're working through those comments currently. And as a part of certification, we will have to implement the rezoning program that was outlined in that housing element, as well as implementing all of the other new programs that were outlined in the housing element. And that may take a couple of years, because the implementation of some of those programs will require code amendments. And so those code amendments would first go forward to the planning commission for a recommendation, and then to the council, council for ultimate adoption. The work in this work plan item also includes the, the drafting of the permanent S B nine ordinance. And we have new A D U law changes that have come down from the state that we will have to address. Additionally, we're continuing to work with the Coastal Commission to certify our A D U changes to the L C P from 2021. That takes us to the Manhattan Village Mall Expansion Project. I'm happy to announce that we are nearing the end of this particular work plan item. Phase one and two have been under construction for the last several years. We have been notified that the work on the culvert will, is, is to culminate at the end of January. We have a couple of outstanding issues to, to deal with on this particular project. Outside of the culvert, we're still finalizing the gateway signage. However, for the most part, this is nearing completion. And when they are ready to come forward with phase three, that will be a separate item from this work plan, as this work plan item did not include phase three. Phase three would be an anticipated entitlement for the F R I site. The wireless telecommunications program, this work plan item has been in place since 2019. In 2019, the, the wireless telecommunications ordinances were updated to comply with federal and state laws. As a part of that effort, we were tasked with educating the community on, on the requirements of the federal government and how that challenges local jurisdictions, and exactly what our powers were and the limitations were as it relates to issuing these permits. This is something that we have not made significant progress with purely based on staff resourcing and availability and more pressing items. Since then, we have seen further changes to state legislation that require additional changes to code. However, just as other housing legislation, if we do not change our code, state law supersedes. So, so even though we have not accomplished this yet, state law would supersede in these particular situations. Historic preservation program, we discussed this last night. We are due to update our ordinance to better align with the intended policy from back in 2016. And we intend to tackle this particular work plan item this year. Last but not least, we have the climate resiliency program. And this is an effort that has been initiated and is underway, multifaceted. The Climate Ready M B program includes a number of steps. And again, these are state-mandated efforts driven by the state's goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And that goal is then passed on to the local jurisdictions to do their fair share of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So the exercise essentially consists of evaluating, evaluating our current emission standards and considering what the city can possibly do to help the state achieve its, meet its targets. And that effort is underway, has been stalled due to resources for the last several months. However, we continue to work on it wherever we can. With that, we are available for questions.
Okay, Councilor Holworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to the wireless telecommunications program, which I do believe started, I think we were still here when it was. At that time, I think it was the Public Works Director who was sort of, am I wrong? Like, no, I'm not, I'm wrong? Councilmember Lesser's whispering.
It's a question, right?
It's a question, but no, but I, but I remember, well, I do remember the community outreach, let's put it that way. It, it doesn't matter which department, I just, that was my memory, and it was wrong. Anyway, there was community outreach, and then it did sort of stop. Everything stopped, right? And it seemed like it was more than the laws and the code amendments. It seemed like we were trying to figure out what we could do to make it better than what the vendor was trying to do, or the telecom was trying to do. Could you just educate me on what actually has to happen before some more wireless repeaters and, and systems get put in for the city?
So, the 2019 changes, changes essentially focused on what's called a small cell facility.
Right.
If that rings a bell. And what the federal government did back then was take away most of our powers in regulating what is considered to be a small cell facility. So, you'll see them in the right-of-way on either existing electrical poles or new poles that are constructed for these smaller-type facilities. For comparison purposes, I would say, when you see those really large antennas on an existing building, for example, that's called a macro facility. So, those are dealt with separately. But what, what the federal government regulations did is establish limitations to what we can do in our review of, of these small cell facilities, because all of the local jurisdictions in processing these were, were being faced with a lot of controversy as it relates to the installation. People were complaining about R F emissions. And the other thing these, these, this, these regulations did is eliminate the ability of anyone to appeal these projects based on R F emissions. And so that's clearly written in the law. And as a result of these changes, the council at the time found it would be worthy to educate the community of what our limitations are as a city. And it comes up once in a while, well, where we'll have a, a permit, and the applicant is required to send out a notice to a certain radius, just to notify them that they're going through the process, and there's an application that the city is considering. It's essentially treated as a ministerial permit. So, it's truly a courtesy notice more than anything. But again, the community members will come to us and say, what can we do to stop this? And we'll tell them, well, they've taken all the correct action, and it's, our, our, our powers are limited. And the, the point of this particular work plan item was to educate the community on what our limitations are as a city, so that we're not dealing with, with the controversy on a one-off basis, and you're generally educating the public, so that they know in advance of getting a notice what our limitations are.
So, this isn't slowing down any, you know, additional, like, facilities. It's just, we haven't figured out a way to educate the community. We haven't decided on that plan.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
On that issue, I mean, what does that mean, educating the community? Are we going to send notices out, emails? Are we going to, what are we going to do? Because I have a concern, that we're going to raise a lot of concern by blanketing the city with this when someone might not be affected by it at all. It seems like we should be educating the folks that are in the radius of a proposed cell site.
And we do that on an individual basis regularly.
Right, so why would we do citywide?
I, I think the goal at the time was to host sessions, community, community workshops for people to understand. But we do do this in our regular course of, course of business. When the neighbors call us and we educate them, we've consistently met them out on the sites, showing them what alternatives were considered.
So what's the, what's the remainder of this? So why is this still in the work plan to educate the community? What does that mean?
The goal initially, and of course, that can change, was to host citywide community workshops to, to educate the public.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be supportive of that. Councilmember Lesser?
I just wanted to follow up on the problem, and forgive me, I recognize this is a broader work plan, to review items that are already there, and I did skim the old work plan. But my recollection from kind of a Rip Van Winkle four-years ago period was that when there were applications over which the city had very little, if any, discretion, neighbors were angry and upset, because they had health impacts, they had view impacts that they were concerned about. So I want to better understand what staff's interpretation is of this work plan item, then. Is it just simply holding these community meetings to indicate how limited review we have?
That's correct, because the first course of action from the neighbors is to contest the project based on R F emissions. And that's the number-one thing that they're not allowed to do. So before they go and invest further resources into researching things like that and filing for appeals, et cetera, the goal is to educate them on other steps they could take, potentially working with the applicant, which we see as the most fruitful generally. We've seen, we've seen the applicants, whether, any of the telecommunications providers, they're more than willing to send someone out and answer questions for the neighbors. And we've met them onsite as well. Explain why other alternatives do not work, explain why it's necessary to have it in that particular location. So those, those kinds of efforts are ongoing, and they're very, they've proved to be, they've proven to be very fruitful.
So just a quick follow-up, to what extent is this an ongoing issue? What we were faced in the 2019 period was that we had multiple applications coming in. Is this still an ongoing issue with applicants for the 5G rollout occurring at the rate that it had been over, maybe, three, four years ago?
That's a very good question. We do consistently process these telecom permits. And I would say about once or twice a year at this point, we're faced with a situation where it's all hands on deck. We get everybody together, we go out to the site, we educate the neighbors. So that, but we, but we are consistently getting, continuing to get applications in, because they, they are upgrading these so frequently. So even if it's not for a brand-new one, we'll have to process the one for the upgrade.
Thank you.
Councilor Franklin?
Yes, on, on the same issue, let's take it from the other side. Let's say that a neighborhood wants to get better wireless service. So what process can they go through there to talk to the wireless provider to say, hey, could you bring in more resources here?
This happens regularly as well. And they'll contact us, and they'll ask us what they can do, and we can let them know that their best course of action is to contact the wireless providers. And generally, we do have contacts, and the wireless providers are happy to hear from those folks, so we will put them in touch.
Is, is there anything that the city does or can do to facilitate that?
In, in addition to putting them in touch with the correct contact?
Yeah, I mean, do we, do we give them some, you know, an information packet? You know, I mean, I would hate to have to call my wireless provider and try to find out who to talk to about this.
We have contacts.
We have the contacts. What we don't have, which is, is really what they need, is to, to have a better understanding from the, the telecommunications providers, where their gaps are, and what their priorities are in targeting those gaps. So typically, what happens is they understand where, where the holes are in their mapping, and then they'll, they'll assign priorities to those, and then they'll start working on the priorities one by one. So they'll be, they'll be able to most help the, the customers in understanding how quickly they could potentially address those issues.
Okay, thank you. And, and so, talking about accessory, you know, accessory dwelling units, A D Us, I was just curious how many applications or how many have actually been built, or since, I can't remember when the A D U ordinance was enacted.
2021, and we're seeing about 10 to 20 per year.
10 to 20 per year?
Uh huh.
So, there are 10 to 20 that have been put in, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Permitted and issued.
Okay, and how is that, how has that worked out? Has there been any objections from neighbors? Has there been park, increased parking problems or anything like that?
We have not heard anything of the sorts, and I'll say that with the state's new no-net-loss regulations, that's been a really helpful tool for our community, where there used to be a duplex, and the new owner is considering, considering a single-family residence. They usually use the opportunity to bring on an A D U to, in order to help them get to that. They usually use the opportunity to bring on an ADU in order to help them get to that. The number two, because they're not allowed to decrease the number of housing units on the site.
So, how does that break down in terms of ADUs and junior ADUs, JADUs, of that 10 to 20 number? Do you have a sense of, I mean, to that point, it's probably easier to put a JADU in what they want to be a single-family residence, right? Because the JADU is completely attached to the main residence, and they just need, what they need a kitchen facility, and they need a door to the outside or something.
Correct. It's a minority. The JADUs are a minority in that number. We're more often seeing the ADUs.
Okay. And what are we doing to educate the homeowner in terms of, if it is a single-family residence, and then they put in an ADU, now it's a two-unit, you know, now it's an R2, right?
It's not an R2, but in terms of education, to answer your question, it's the planners. The planners are out there, talking at the counter, speaking to the developers, the homeowners, taking the phone calls, answering the emails all day long. And so, it's our city planners who are educating the public on this matter.
And so, the implication being that, once you convert it to two units, you can't go back, right?
Well, they're mostly bringing the ADU on when there's an existing duplex, and they cannot reduce that number. So, if there's a duplex on the site, and you want to build a single-family residence, you can't do that unless you also add an ADU.
Oh, I see. Okay. So, is it also the minority of a single-family residence, and they want to put a, you know, ADU in there for parents, or somebody, caretakers, you know, whatever?
We're not really allowed to ask who they're going to be, who's going to be residing in the ADU. We do have ADU covenants that they are required to sign, and we get recorded onto the property. And they have certain restrictions when you build an ADU. You can't convert that ADU back to anything without letting the city know. And so, they are regulated, and it's recorded, it's on their title.
Right. Okay. I mean, that's why I was asking about the education. I mean, that's a big implication, because it may serve their needs now, but later on, when they're ready to sell the property, there may not be a market for...
We do educate them heavily.
For that. Okay. I'd like to see a little bit more proactive education of someone who's inquiring about that, because it's a pretty sophisticated, you know, process that they'd be going through, and, you know, they may not be thinking of selling the property until like 10, 15, 20 years from now.
I would hesitate, because, first of all, we don't want to give them legal advice as to what they do. It's on them to research it. I'm going to say right now, as we know, you want to expedite outdoor dining. Staff is busy enough right now. I don't want them to go, I don't want them to go on an education campaign, community-wide for cell or ADUs. It's google.com, it's there. I don't think we need to educate people in ADUs.
Like I say, it's, you know, someone's home is their most valuable possession.
And it's on them to do the research. Just like if they build a new house, they need to know all the codes and hire people who know those things, too. And they would hire contractors and architects and things for these. I don't want the staff to have to say, "We're going to go out." Anyone who's interested, just come on down and start talking to me.
A piece of paper.
Most of the contractors and developers who come in are well-versed. Most of the contractors and developers are well-versed in the matter. We spend most of our time educating the homeowners.
Right.
The ones who aren't well-versed.
Okay. Councilwoman Horwath.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, to your point, Mr. Mayor, why don't we just, I mean, with, I don't know if it has to happen here, or suggested a planning commission, unless there's some burning passion desire that I'm not hearing, why don't we take off this effort to educate the community on the limits placed on cities in regulating, you know, wireless telecommunications? I mean, there's...
I agree.
Take it off. Take it off. You've got other things to do. You know, an FAQ at the most, but don't even prioritize that. I mean, it's, like you say, they have to notice the neighbors, and I'm sure you have language that, like you say, you go out to the sites, and, you know, I just think, if that does anything to help the process, so with concurrence of my colleagues...
I've yet to meet anyone who doesn't feel they're more educated about cell sites than staff.
Usually the person wearing a tinfoil.
I'm about saying that. I'm just saying that a lot of people do their research, and that's why they do come up with issues, and why they appeal.
Absolutely, and that's why, for better or worse, I'm not saying I agree with the state law. It takes it, you know, it takes that issue away.
Again, though, I agree. I think we need to take things off the plate.
Absolutely, sir.
Of planning and public works, so that we can focus on those core things that we've asked them to do, and we've asked them to expedite. And, you know, FAQs and things like that are great, but they take time.
Legally vetted. So, do you guys, is there a consensus, like, oh, David wants to speak?
Councilwoman Lesnar.
Before I offer support for the proposal, I just wanted to ask staff, do you see a need for this item, whether you get to it later, or would it be just as well to remove this from the work plan?
I think it would be absolutely fine to remove it from the work plan. We educate the public in our regular course of duty.
I'm happy to be your third.
All right. What else? Our items? All right. Where we go next?
We've presented all of the work plan items, and if there's a particular one you'd like to discuss, I will...
I'd like to hear from the commissioners.
Absolutely.
I thought we passed out microphones, right? I know Mr. Kuzma has a question. Jerry?
We just love working together and love working with you guys. We're having a lot of fun.
All right. Is there anything you guys want to do that we're not doing, or take off the plate? And I'll say this right now, and we had this conversation before, and reveal for my colleagues, you know, yes, we have this environmental sustainability manager position that we have not been able to fill, the last person, I guess, bowed out, that we were about to offer it to. I would be looking at this point to divide those duties between the departments of Public Works and Planning Commission, who have to implement anyway, and have the commissioners lead the charge, also on environmental issues, making recommendations to council, with the Sustainability Task Force as a technical working group that advises staff and pushes things up to the commissions. I don't have a lot of faith at this point that we're going to find a sustainability manager. Frankly, I'd like to save the salary. I think that between, it needs to be, it should be integrated within the workings of Public Works and the Planning Commission, or Public Works and Community Development to be working these things. I don't want it to be this separate little silo that then boils stuff up, and then we hear about it later. In fact, last time, I think, things came to us regarding water capture, regarding, you know, getting rid of gas ozone. It came directly from the task force to us. It really should have been vetted through the commissions first. And so, you know, I'm looking, if we do anything, you know, we need more folks in the Community Development Department staff. I don't, rather than having these other folks in other silos, we need more Public Works, we need more engineers, we need more planners, we need more permit technicians. We hear this all the time. Things are backed up. I'm getting emails from developers that, you know, this is the worst it's ever been working in the city of Manhattan Beach. It takes six months just to get an appointment or something, and that really has slowed a lot of things down. And the two major things that we're talking about, between outdoor dining, between the zoning ordinance revision that we're going to have to undertake because of the six housing element, there's a lot of stuff that these folks are going to be busy with. And I am a proponent of efficiency. I hate, that's why, you heard me, I'm not going to apologize, I'm disappointed that we don't have a full house here. When we have a joint meeting, I expect everyone to show up. I showed up, you sign up, you show up. And so, same thing here. I want us all to be working together on this thing. There's a lot of stuff that's going to come down the pipe, and we need every, all hand on deck, as you said. But we don't have enough staff in those departments already to then, you know, fiddle around with other things. I think we can accomplish a lot with the folks, with the departments we already have, and the people are, but we need some support for them. I'd rather get a couple people for Community Development before we fill that spot. That's me. I throw that out there for my colleagues. I see Councilwoman Horwath, who I'm sure has...
I'm the Lorax. I speak for the tree.
Who I'm sure is vehemently in agreement with me.
Well, actually, no, there's, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, there's some things you said, and as I do agree with. Yeah. No, but I, one thing, I do think, when I first was on council the first time, in the very beginning, the position was in the Public Works Department, and then it was moved over to Community Development. I think there's a lot of wisdom in, I mean, it's really about the two different departments, right? It's not, I actually, I mean, but I'm not a city manager, I'm not the Director of Community Development or Director of Public Works, so I don't know. Maybe they, maybe there's a good reason. So, I guess, I don't want this position or role to go away. I think it's vitally important. I think some of the things that were in the work plan, well, the thing that was under the Climate Resiliency Program, a lot of that is mandated, you know, so it actually wouldn't help them not to have that position filled. Is that correct? I mean...
Well, but you could have a staff person in Community Development who does those mandated things. I guess my, again, the idea, though, is that it's great for PR to say, "We have a sustainability manager," but what are they doing that we can't accomplish in other ways?
I guess I think that, then, I'd rather that Community Development person be working on those areas that we need the critical support in. I don't think we have to not hire an environmental service manager, or whatever you want to call the person, in order to hire enough staff in Community Development. I think we can do both. I think that, so, that's...
To that point, I guess, I would like to see an evaluation, too, as to what's been done, what we see for that position going forward. Because if they, really, if they're doing things with so much overlap, I'd rather have a flexible person who can do both things than one person who does one thing.
And that's, Mr. City Manager, I mean, that's, oh, but could I make one more point before you speak to that?
And then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lesnar.
Thank you. And I do understand sort of your governance comment about things coming right from the Sustainability Task Force to us, and that could be run differently. That can, you know, I feel like there is room there, because you don't, I don't know that we want to, you know, it's almost as if it's another commission, and they just say, "Oh, okay, great, we can do this, this, and this." And because they're very smart, and they have great ideas, but there's, you know, we need to kind of, you know, rein that in a bit, right? So, I could see, I understand the governance piece of it, and I think we could accomplish that somehow, but obviously, I want to keep a focus on that. So, I don't know if you want the director or city manager to speak, or David, but those are my comments.
I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Lesnar.
Did you want to jump in? After you. So, one of the joys of serving with this particular group is I think there's a desire to look at these challenges, even where we don't always agree. I share the mayor's concerns about what's been going on in Community Development with the shortage of staff. I respectfully disagree about eliminating this position, probably no surprise. Our city was actually a trendsetter in bringing on this position, because it takes staff to implement many of these highfalutin ideas. We're in a climate emergency, and I see a role for this position going forward, to take on not just the immediate projects of today, but to identify what projects we, as a council, determine need to be prioritized, and then to follow through and to follow up. So, I would very much like to see a continuation of the position, the Environmental Programs' Sustainability Manager, or whatever it might be called. And we can have a fuller conversation, using some criteria that the mayor just mentioned in passing, to sort of evaluate that position, but I think we should continue it.
Speaking of climate change, I'm freezing.
I said I was hot, and I saw you get up, and I'm like, oh, no.
You're hot?
I was. I'm not now.
Goodness. Councilwoman Franklin.
Yes. So, I think we're leaving out a really important group in this discussion, and that's our residents themselves. I think they're really capable of making these kind of decisions to reduce emissions, if that's the goal. Aren't we, I think I read something, we're like, we're the highest percentage, or we're at one of the highest percentages of electric vehicles in the state. And that's a decision that's made in their homes. They take a look at it. Goodness knows, we're doing it in our home of, you know, okay, here's, you know, we're ready at that step. I'm notoriously cheap, and I make cars last a long time. So, my car that I have parked out there is now 14-years-old. But we're going through this decision process, okay, do we go electric? Well, where is the electricity produced that's going into that car, right? Because it's not 100% green, because the electricity is being produced somewhere, and sometimes by fossil fuels. But that decision's being made at the home. The same thing for our restaurants and businesses, recycling, things like that. These, you know, the people in Manhattan Beach are quite intelligent, and they're very resourceful, and they have resources to do something about it. Solar panels, things like that. So, when you kind of like, look at the 30,000-foot level, and you see what's the biggest impact on emissions, those decisions are going to be made at the home. Why, you know, we could come in and mandate it, but nobody likes to have mandates.
I think the focus here, though, is whether or not we fill this position.
Well, and so, there's the thing, in terms of, I like the idea of resource-sharing it among the various commissions, because the big pieces that are going to be decided are going to be decided by the residents, and they can be there to guide. In this case, I guess we do want to educate our residents, as opposed to...
It's a different thing.
Well, I guess what I'm missing is, what are they going to do? Because, right, it has to be above and beyond what the state and the region is doing to really justify the position. Because, right, we have mandates coming down. New homes have to have solar on them. You have to have certain capture for water and things. So, a lot of these things are coming, which are rightfully so, because it makes sense. Manhattan Beach isn't going to change its climate on its own. We're part of this larger organism, and the state mandates that are coming down are in line with a lot of things that we started off so far ahead. We started off so far ahead for plastic bags and things like that. The state caught up with us, and now the state exceeds sometimes, or at least meets what our goals are, whether it's EV-only electric vehicles sold in California after 2035, or whatever it is. You know, we're not going to say that Toyota, you can't sell anything but EVs starting 2025, right? So, what is it, again, I want to see what this position is going to actually be looking at to do. And we're already doing the climate change paper for the amendment to the general plan, right?
The local coastal programs amendment?
Yeah, that we got the grant for.
That's with the Coastal Commission right now. But once they provide us with responses, then we'll have to pick back up on the work we were doing there to respond to them, to address any questions or changes that they require. However, I will say that the work on the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan has paused. That is a tremendous effort, again, state-mandated, that we have not been able to continue over the course of the last months. We have the Dune Restoration Project. We have a number of...
Would that be the Sustainability Manager doing that work for the local coastal plan?
So, on that topic, I did want to say that we essentially rebranded the position when we went out for recruitment this last round. It's now called the Environmental Programs Administrator. And this person would be responsible for the already-in-place programs that the city has, the Green Business Program being an example of that. We are mandated by the state, in addition to the Climate Action Plan, to update our safety element, and the Coastal Hazards Chapter of the LCP, the effort on that was a part of that. And so, it's expected that this individual would not only take all the state mandates, assess the city's weaknesses, strengths, vulnerabilities, develop the policy, take the policy through the community workshops, present it to the task force. And on that matter, I did want to note that all policy work does have to go through the Planning Commission, just like the local coastal hazards chapter did.
Go through planning anyways.
So, it does.
So, how long has it been that this position's been absent?
Since June. Since June. And, and our, our work has unfortunately paused for the time being. I, I do understand your, your concerns and your questions, and if there's a desire to potentially consider, again, rebrand it a different way. I, I will say that as it stands right now, the planners do not have, they don't have the capacity for, to fulfill this. And also, there's a certain level of technical expertise that's needed to push these projects through, to truly understand the state laws that are coming down from, from Sacramento, and then know exactly what you have to do to assess the strengths, weaknesses, and vulnerabilities of the city, and understand how to essentially customize the policy that we develop for the city.
I'd rather hire an environmental planner.
I like, well, I like the rebrand, sorry, David, sorry.
It's okay. I want to make sure, see, the City Manager, is something he wanted to add at this point, or no?
No, Tallina's covered it, but if you want more planners, I'm happy to bring more back in the, in the budget. I think it's appropriate.
Instead of, instead of whatever we're rebranding.
Well. I, I, I can't commit to that, though, right, at this point. And I, and if there's consensus on council that you want to take a different approach with our environmental programs, we'll take a look at it and see.
We've got four people here, so it doesn't look like it's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, at some point in the future, but, you know, we're happy to look at alternative ways, and perhaps it's the environmental planner or some other approach.
To pick up on what the City Manager just said is, I, I think that what you're asking, Mr. Mayor, is, is an appropriate question in terms of staffing. We have limited resources as a city. We have a limited number of staff, and we are obviously not meeting the capacity of the demand. But I see this position as not only imperative for what are, some of our current obligations are, but going forward, we were a model city in adopting this position early on, and other cities are emulating us. And I recognize that there is, combined with some of this concern about this position when there's such a need for other planners, is the fact that there was perhaps a feeling that the position was, and the person occupying it, was getting ahead of council, going for reach codes, picking subjects that council didn't get behind, and it was felt that perhaps a lot of staff time went into that without council support, and that was a waste of time. I would argue, as we've just heard, there are current obligations that we must fulfill, where the expertise of this position would be helpful, and there are more obligations going forward. I also might suggest that one of the reasons why we've missed out on these individuals that had accepted a position and then picked another job is because of the labor market that we're experiencing in so many other areas in our city now, where it's a competitive market for those that are trained in this area. There's a huge amount of demand, and that might be one of the reasons why individuals are not choosing to come and work here.
That's an argument to raise the salary, which I won't support either. Councilwoman Horwath.
I mean, I, and listen, there's four of us here, so we aren't going to give any consensus on direction, because I sense, you know, but, but I also think there's a way that we can kind of work through this, right? In that, I actually really liked the rebranding, like, I think it was Environmental Programs Administrator. That, you know, and you mentioned Councilmember Franklin, EPA. That's pretty clever. So, and I, whether you call it that, whether you call it the environmental planner, you know, whether, I think, and I think Councilmember Lesser's comments were, were, were very insightful about perhaps, you know, there was a disconnect between the last, the Environmental Services person, who I think was very skilled and an expert in her field, but maybe she pushed things. Let's, what I'm hearing from the staff, and not so much, you know, I don't know that anyone's, well, anyway, what I'm hearing from the staff is, no, this is a different type of person than a regular planner, right? This is, and that, a planner has, planner might be more expensive than this person, frankly, because the planner has other skills. So I, let's, I want to leave it to them. The last thing I will say is I do think there is an appropriate place for local government in this space. I don't think people, there are a lot of smart people who maybe don't want to do the right thing, and sometimes we have to put in those codes, so I'll, I'll always fight for that. And, and I think what David's point, you know, other people have emulated us, and I can just, I can just see you, Mr. Mayor, going, who cares, like, we don't have to. But, but it, it starts other, it, it's a ripple effect, and it positively affects the resiliency of our area or our state, or, you know, it's important. But, but that's a, that is maybe a political difference, and we can get around that. Let's figure out staffing and all of that.
A lot of cities are doing stuff without an environmental manager. Councilwoman Franklin.
So I just, so, so first I have a question. It seemed to me, when I was looking at the budget report by the departments, didn't this position sort of, couldn't we get grant money to help pay for that position? It seemed to me it was almost a wash, wasn't it? With the grant money, there was a certain portion that said, hey, you can use this to hire somebody. Do you know that specifically?
Potentially a grant in the past. I don't think any of our active grants are, are formulated that way, but I would have to get back to you on that after confirming.
Okay, because I seem to remember it was kind of a zero sum.
Well, that just means if the position would last as long as the grant lasts, then you have to find another.
Right, yeah, they're finding another, another source, but that's their job, would be to go out and get grants, you know, to do these sort of things. But again, I just want to reiterate, I'm sorry, you know, Councilwoman Horwath, I don't agree with you. There are a lot of smart people in Manhattan Beach who work, pay a mortgage, send their kids to college, things like that. I think they can handle this, you know, in terms of, and they can look at their, you know, at, at what they want to do and make an impact. I want to, you know, have a cleaner world for my children and my grandchildren, okay? So that's going to, you know, that's going to make decision, you know, I'll make decisions accordingly. And in Manhattan Beach, I think the reason that we're so successful is because there are people like that who are environmentally, you know, conscious, and they don't have to be told what to do. They can read the New York Times, they can read the LA Times, they can read the Wall Street Journal. They can understand what's going on. So I think we have a lot of smart people, yes, and I think they're smart enough to do the right thing, and they don't have to be, like, shown a primrose path. And, you know, the, the reason I know this is because, you know, I, I looked at the workshops before that were handled by the Sustainable Building Manager. Eight people, 12 people, seven people showed up. You know, there's 13,000 resident, resident buildings here in Manhattan Beach. That is by no means an overwhelming majority that are seeking this out. I mean, people are telling us with their absence that it's not, you know, what we have to say is not important. They can figure it out, and they do figure it out. They're buying electric cars. I could probably get a good deal on a Tesla, you know, these days. But they're, you know, they're doing the, the key things. If they, if they think about, you know, if they want an electric stove, put it in an electric stove. You know, they're doing it, but they, they don't have to be told and, you know, and, and taught on.
Just a tip for you, though. You said you can't get, you want to buy an electric car, but you're worried about where your energy's coming from? If you signed up for 100% green power with Clean Power Alliance, it would all be renewable, and you could power your car.
And I have, and that was one of the reasons, that was one of the reasons we did, was the fact that our home didn't pencil out in terms of, you know, putting up solar panels.
Okay, before the commissioners fall asleep, let's hear from them.
And I was able to make that decision, right? As are our 35,000 residents.
Mayor Napolitano, I also did want to note for the record that both the Planning Commission and the PPIC met before tonight's meeting and reviewed the work plan before coming here this evening, and neither commission wanted to add anything or change anything on the work plan.
Okay. Anything else, though?
I just have a question about this discussion. Isn't there a job description for this position that outlines specifics about what the roles and responsibility are?
Sort of.
Sort of, okay. And wouldn't the focus of that be the city and how the city's sustainability and emissions reduction and all of that, as opposed to a broader, community-wide initiative? Like focus on electric cars for the city fleet and putting solar panels on city buildings, like that?
I can answer that question.
Yeah, we already do, do, of electric cars.
Yeah, it's, it's a very good question, and that's why we have to develop the policy and see what the city's vulnerabilities are. And it could, that policy could potentially translate to citywide efforts and efforts on the part of the city. For example, electric vehicle fleets. It could also trickle into the residents, so it's actually, it, the response is actually, it's both.
So there is a job description that outlines the specifics of what this position was going to be responsible for?
Yes.
And my point is, I want flexibility, so they do more than just this when it's needed. The idea that, that we have a job description is great, but, you know, we have a job description for every position in the city, but we need, again, people not working in silos. We need people working across all spectrums when, if we have a need here, we need everyone to shift over there. So that's my, and, and, you know, things like electric fleets, anyone here could come up with that. I don't think we need environmental special training to say, oh, you know what? We should do electric cars instead of gas-powered cars for the city fleet. Good idea. I don't think that takes special. Other questions?
I've now, your original comment, Mayor, was that the commissions only met six times, once every two months.
Well, that was my, my question was that. They gave me the answer that it was six times. Well, you're, you're mischaracterizing what I said.
Let me continue, and I think you'll understand better why I'm raising it.
Okay.
Because it's not so much the number, but it would be the quality. And as a commissioner, in three years, I feel like the only contribution I've made is we put up a stop sign. So I don't feel that my, the commission I'm on is doing all that much for the city. So it's not just the time, but the quality. So I'm, I, I hope, I'm sounding like I'm supporting what you're saying. My point is, I think I would love to see more direction from City Council in terms of what you're looking for, for commissions to be doing, because frankly, I, I just feel like a rubber stamp.
I think you guys are underutilized.
I, I totally agree.
I think you guys should have full agendas. They, they used to meet, Planning Commission used to have lots of meetings. Used to have tons of things, controversial stuff that would, would fill the room. I feel bad that we don't put enough on your plate.
Yeah, I would just, I would echo what, what you both said. This is my second go-round on the PPIC, and I recall the first go-round, and when I was on the Planning Commission as well. I rarely, I don't remember meetings being canceled as often as they are now and having maybe one thing on the agenda. We were constantly busy and being engaged. And I think you have free resources here in the commissioners, in the commissions. Not so much staff, but, but you have a lot of very, you know, smart and diverse perspectives that can help solve and provide, not solve, but provide insight and, and suggestions and recommendations just for City Council to consider, without maybe exercising as much staff time as we're talking about. To the point about, you know, sustainability, I think back to when Councilman Lesser and I were, served on the Planning Commission together. I recall one of the very first projects, I think, I approved as a planning commissioner, was the Wells Fargo Building at Manhattan Beach Boulevard in Sepulveda. And I, if I recall correctly, and my mind may be foggy, but I think it was the very first LEED-certified commercial building in all of Manhattan Beach. So we do have a long history of sustainability and promoting environmentally conscious building, at least within the commercial community. And I'm thinking in particular, something that stuck out with me, to me, is the, the permeable concrete. That's so simple. But look what's, look what just has happened in the last three weeks. All of these storms that we've had, California is still not going to be out of a drought. And it, because a lot, you know, that water, a lot of it's going into the ocean, there's runoff. Permeable concrete, at least go into the ground. I mean, I'm not here to argue for that, but it's an example of, in the past, you know, we, we had, we had real things to, to review and to help promote. And I think we have, we have a missed opportunity here that we should recapture going forward.
And that's why it concerns me, when I hear that the commissioners don't have anything to add or to take away from the, the plans. Plan is fine, but it's not much there. So are you guys sure you don't want to add anything or do anything else than what you're doing?
I don't know. We may be atrophied right now as a body.
Yeah, and it's with two or three years of COVID during this term, other, other things were focused on. But we spoke.
We, we spoke about, that we, a statement was made about we previously approved the work plan. If we did, I must have slept through it, because I, I just don't remember it. So, and if, if this is the work plan, it, it just doesn't seem to have much if we're looking for a 12-month time period. So I understand the focus on outdoor dining. I understand the other focuses. Maybe that, and that we're short on staff overall. Maybe that's why we're not seeing other things. But there just isn't much going on here.
Well, for me, and again, speaking for myself, Councilwoman Lesser, I'll get right to you, but just because the question's come, because, you know, stuff that I put forward, I'm fine with you guys coming up with ideas. We'll bat them away if we don't like them. That's the nature of the relationship. You guys make recommendations. We agree, we don't agree. But, you know, medians, right? I've been saying for years, we need medians more like Palm Springs than we have right here. We need to get rid of the, the turf, in terms of saving water and everything else, making things more drought tolerant. I mean, our parks need work. There's a lot of overlap in Public Works. As Director Lee certainly knows, because he deals with it, you know, why aren't you guys looking at that, too, and not just Parks and Rec Commission? Parking, I mean, there are red zones I don't understand that are red, and, and blanks that aren't, and why don't we have more motorcycle-designated parking or electric vehicle, electric bike parking now on the street as if they were motorcycles, rather than being parked on the sidewalks? There's plenty of things for you guys to look at. I, I see it every day when I go walking. And so I would just say, start looking at these things. I don't want you to feel atrophied. I don't want you to feel like a rubber stamp. I don't want you to feel like you got nothing to do. Your time is valuable, too. I want you to feel like you have something to bring to the table, and we'll tell you whether it works or not, because we look in terms of budget and stuff like that, and we, you know, lightning rod for people kicking and screaming. But, you know, there's, as you said, we got a lot of smart people who can contribute a lot. I want you to do that. I don't want you to feel like you didn't approve this. That's a terrible thing in my mind. Councilwoman Lesser.
I was going to make two comments. First, with regard to the absence of meetings, I was going to pick up on what Commissioner Kirshman said, and that is, I think Kirshman, excuse me, is that the COVID, as well as the challenges of staff, I think have paid, played directly in the reason why there haven't been meetings, because there just hasn't been staff to put together the staff reports, get them posted. I also can recall to my time on the PPIC 19 years ago, that's kind of crazy. There were a number of missed meetings. When staff did not have specific substantive projects for us to consider, they would not meet, so it's not completely unusual. But from a process standpoint, I'd like to really lean into the comments that you just made, Mr. Mayor. I think there are a number of different initiatives that the PPIC could potentially explore, but I was wondering about process. What would be a constructive process beyond what we already have here, where technically there's a work plan that the commission has a chance to review before this joint meeting, which is why it's so important, which is why it's mandated, so that there could be some guidance from council to get authority for the commission to evaluate it? So perhaps the best we can do, because we have this meeting now tonight, is again, to perhaps ask through the mayor, is are there any initiatives that might be of interest to commissioners? And I look to the Planning Commission as well, even though I recognize certain commissioners unfortunately only have a certain number of meetings left, but perhaps there are some issues from the wise council of the seasoned commissioners that they wish the commission could explore, and then, subject to staffing resources, the commission can explore in council direction.
Like I said before, I, for me, I brought up the absences or the cancellations of the meetings, because why is it that they're being canceled? And I'm hearing now, you know, I've got other commissioners from other commissions who email me all the time saying, you know, what's going on? We're not doing anything. Why can't we get things going? And then we have a discussion, and we, we figure that out. You know, I certainly have never heard that any meeting was canceled because staff couldn't do an agenda or something like that. There might be something, a lack of items on there. COVID, meetings were easier with COVID, with, uh, doing it by Zoom. I don't need the gestures, right? Things, things were, were, if there's a, if, if there's a reason on the staff level why we haven't had meetings, I want to know that, because we've never been told that before. And if there's a, if it's a staff issue, then why is there a staff issue?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can help answer some of that. COVID was a big hit to a lot of the work that the PPIC was working on or doing. We.
We, the residents themselves generate a lot of the requests that go to PPIC, whether it's a request for a stop sign or changes in parking.
I hear COVID, but I'm talking about the last year, 2022. So 2020, 2021, I get. 2022, really?
Yes, there's still after effects. The number of requests that came into the city for those kinds of measures that would eventually go to city council really dropped off. People basically hibernated in their houses and they didn't, they didn't reach out in that way. So that's one thing that the PPIC would have been doing. There were two or three other neighborhood traffic management plans that we have on the books waiting to resolve. Those were put on hold during COVID as well because we could not do the traffic studies because there was no traffic on the street. The Gelson's or the hotel or the mall were not finished yet, so we couldn't come back again with those studies. Those are gearing back up again for the PPIC to hold their meetings. That was another factor. There were other things that the PPIC used to do as well. And to your point, Commissioner Paralus, the, many years ago, as far as, a lot of the encroachment permit were, permits were reviewed by the PPIC in the public right-of-way. We haven't had the appeals come through asking or appealing the city's decision or the city staff's decision on encroachments. Telecommunications used to go to PPIC. Those are no longer going to PPIC as well because there's a, there's a process and an ordinance for that. So it streamlined the processes for people to do that and have those permits issued so they don't have to go through the PPIC and add another layer of bureaucracy. There are some things that-
Did we have any meetings canceled because staff couldn't handle the agenda?
No, we look at what the agenda, what we could bring and there wasn't, isn't there. What the PPIC could get into, and let me preface that by saying, the PPIC can't initiate an item. It's not allowed in the boards and commissions handbook. It either is generated or initiated by the city council for the commission to look at or it's generated by an appeal or by the, a larger issue that staff has raised or has, has in front of them that needs a council review. And they are, they are the sounding block for you, in essence. Things that the PPIC could do are-
That's a perfect example that if you've got an idea, send it to us to see if we want to bring it forward, to tell staff that yes, we want to do that, and you guys review it.
Exactly. Things that the PPIC can do is, is look and be a public forum for a lot of PPIC, sorry, a lot of CIP projects, a lot of capital projects. So that when changes are being proposed as far as a public works project is concerned, whether it's a traffic signal or something like that, the PPIC can be that, that open house for that, that, that type of thing. This is the forum. This work plan item, joint meeting, is when we used to talk about what things we wanted to add to the PPIC.
I'll confess right now, and Councilman Lesser, I'll get right to you, I'll confess right now. I don't like this. I never have. This idea of the work plan, I like it in general terms. It should not be a constraint, though, on other things. There are some things that are unavoidable and are mandated, we have to do. I get that. But the other things, especially quality of life things, we tend to hold back because everyone's afraid to talk about them, except council. I want to hear from commissioners, if you've got an idea, if they need to go through council, send it to us. And if we agree, any one of us agrees, they can put it on a future agenda item to ask staff to make that an issue for you guys to review. Fair enough? Councilman Lesser?
What I can recall from my days on PPIC is the council generated some ideas which we wanted, or the council wanted studied. Outdoor dining, back 19 years ago, we studied it. Flashing crosswalks, was that appropriate for our city? Different types of stop signs that might be more effective than another. For example, just as an example of something that might be current, there's ongoing issues as to how certain intersections can be improved. For example, with stop signs with bright lights. Technically, that's within the jurisdiction exclusively within the traffic engineer because obviously there's state standards, there's law, we can be held liable if some approach was tried that is not consistent with state law. But maybe this is an opportunity for something that PPIC can study as to whether or not this is too urban, for example, for Manhattan Beach as opposed to something that might be efficacious. But I just would offer that maybe this is an opportunity for council more often, like in the old days, to come up with ideas, particularly as we dealt with them, as these issues came up, to suggest that it might be something for PPIC or the Planning Commission to study.
All right, I'm writing that down. It's my Scrabble word, efficacious. Councilmember Horford?
Thank you. Thank you for understanding the gesture of the button. And I do apologize. I think there is a process issue a little bit, too. And because when I hear Eric say, you know, this is the time, right, to come up to say, we want you to focus on this, this is what you should do this year. And yet, the staff report doesn't say that at all, right? And it doesn't say, hey, this is when you can come up with this, you know, it's, here's what we're doing, right? So cut something, which I'm happy to cut things off, and I'm also happy not to come up with a bunch of ideas. Because let's be honest, if it's going to the commission, it has to go through staff, right? And I personally, my, you know, and I hear you, Commissioner Kirschman, I definitely want all of our commissioners to feel utilized and appreciated. I also really want to focus on downtown dining decks, downtown dining decks. So however they can be pulled in, maybe it's more than just a task force, you know? Maybe there's something of that. But so I think in the future, the process, it needs to be maybe a little more, you know, inquiring of, let's, let's talk about, this is a great, you know, what we want to do. Also, though, I just want to confirm, process-wise, I, you know, love what you said. Hey, commissioners, if you have something you want to work on, reach out to council. Do you think, and this is so ticky-tacky, but should they reach out to all of us? Should they reach out to just the mayor, only because?
All of them.
I would say all, just because that way we all, you know, just clarifying for y'all.
I just, you know-
I love that.
I know that Bruce will kick me in the shins later, but I honestly feel, and I understand COVID, we lived through COVID. We all did in dealing with things in the city. But since this was, which was pre-COVID as well, this format, I honestly feel like we get less done with this format because this is blocked, oh, it's not on the work plan, so we can't do that. And I get that, but, you know, I think that just means we need to review and reprioritize as things come up. That's what I prefer, so. Any other comments from anyone? Commissioners, anything else from Planning Commission? You're just happy to be here.
I'd just like to say, like, on a personal level, I would like to see some progress made with regard to green building standards for new residential development. You know, as Commissioner Paralus mentioned, like, there was some progress made on the commercial side of things. And Councilmember Franklin is correct that there are many wonderful residents who could really push to get, push forward a sustainability agenda. But that would refer to existing construction that's already here. You know, what will drive forward-thinking green building standards are future buyers, right? And future buyers are constrained by the supply. And we, you know, we're in a position where we could influence the supply by developing and promoting green building standards. That doesn't necessarily mean that the developers would build it. But as a city, if we're going to take a stance on this, then I think that we should set that out there, you know? Manhattan Beach, if you're somebody that's looking to buy a home that is fully sustainable, fully green, integrated gray water systems, you know, that sort of thing, you're not looking at Manhattan Beach at all. It's not on the map, you know? Maybe if you're interested in living here already and you have that lifestyle, then you're going to custom-build something, right? But until the supply gets influenced and starts to develop, like, those buyers aren't even going to look at Manhattan Beach. And I think the first step in that is, is green building standards for residential development. And it's something that we hear about. And I stood shoulder to shoulder with people during election cycles and heard this promoted. And it's never, no one's ever taken any leadership on this. And I'll tell you, we've felt, I've felt constrained as chair of the Planning Commission because of this, it's a chicken or egg situation with this sustainability manager or as it's morphing to a different position, where you think that the leadership on that will come from that position, right? But it's sounding more like it should be coming from us to you to come back to us. And if that's the case, then I'm certainly happy to raise the green flag and start, you know, pushing that forward. Be happy to put forth the ideas in terms of things that you want more direction on. It's just, we've been in this, you know, stop-start on sustainability, on green issues because of that open position, so. The only other thing that I wanted to mention, because you had asked about representatives being appointed, the Planning Commission is very much aware that there are going to be some definite changes in May and some possible changes in May in terms of the composition of the commission. So to that end, we weren't aware when the task force, the outdoor dining task force was going to begin. So we've appointed, we've appointed representatives, alternates, second alternates, just in case, to make sure that there is no loss of institutional memory should those task forces pick up. That's part of the, part of the planning that we're doing in terms of any representative assignments that we need to make over the next couple of months.
All right. Anything else from council? We've said enough?
Perhaps I would just offer again, is there anything more that you'd like to contribute so that you feel that this evening has been productive, constructive? So you feel that you're valued for all the time that you volunteered to the city through the commission, particularly if you have an idea? Because notwithstanding the fact that there are challenges with the current process, this is the process we have right now. So this is your opportunity if you see some other item that you think should be studied. So do you have any other thoughts?
Just one quick thought, which is, back in, I want to say, May, April or May, there was a discussion of a water increase in the city of Manhattan Beach. I'm not sure which commission has any responsibility for dealing with water issues that the city is faced with. No, I just mean, for example, gray water. For example, desalinization was a big discussion. Who in the city is actually, is there a commission that would be helpful in taking some of that off of people's plates so that it was better organized?
Things like PPIC would. I mean, the D-SAL was more of a political position to take for the city. The rate increases were talked about by the finance subcommittee. And because it's a tax or a fee that's increased. And so, you know, as to whether it should go forward, again, political as well. But as far as capture, as far as gray water and things like that, that's a perfect example of, you know, I think, overlap between PPIC and planning because that would be one of those green niches where you can have the plumbing for gray water use. And it's environmental and the PPIC, I keep saying public works, I'm going to say, Public Works looks at it, too. And that's a perfect example of crossover to me. And Richard says, he's delayed, do not wait. Pat Sumner, yes, Casarola.
One, I don't know if everybody from, especially the PPIC, knows, I really, you made a comment last night, Mr. Mayor, when we were talking about downtown dining decks. We were talking about the task force. So we were like, you know, we all are committed to really, you know, supporting that and making it happen. And you just threw out an idea very casually that I thought was rather brilliant, which is like, what happens if we removed our parking meters and had a parking kiosk? And so that's something, I mean, that could come to the task force, but like, be thinking about that and be thinking about it now in terms of, even before the task force, you know, is convened. Like, that's something that would really, you know, you guys could start vetting and thinking about it, right? So there-
A lot of impediments off the sidewalk.
Hurrah, I felt the same way.
I know, I was like, wow.
It's a great idea.
I do like, that's a good idea.
You had another input interim director?
No, I'm waiting to see if you have further direction for us.
We're just kibitzing up here. We need to fill the time until-
I propose that as we go forward, and I'm sorry-
I'm sorry. Councilman Lesser, you start.
I propose as we go forward that we bear in mind that there are these policy issues that our commission, I think, commissions would like to explore. And as was the practice in the past, is to direct staff to have the commissions consider some of these issues. And thus, throughout the year, they might have more work. The point of the work plan was that, so there weren't too many issues that piled up and that they were prioritized a bit. But I welcome collecting more at a minimum because the list is rather paltry to the extent there's not a staffing issue. I think we want to give them more to do, so.
Councilor Franklin?
Yeah, so just a point about the parking, you know, the parking meters and the like. So you could potentially solve different problems, right? Together, there's going to be some crossover, like the removal of the post allows room for a table. And then also the technology now, I was just in Hawaii, and you go up and there's QR codes and you text in and you go ahead and you pay that way. But it also allows you, and this could solve another problem for us, they bifurcate the rates, you know? So if you're a local, you're paying one rate, and if you're a visitor, you're paying another rate. And that could solve a lot of problems as well, you know, with residential parking permits, so. But those things you just see as you're out and about. And so however that could, you know, work between the two or, you know, to solve these larger problems like outdoor dining, it's very, very important.
Great.
Okay, I think that's it for us. We're good?
Yep.
All right, then we will adjourn. We have another council meeting tomorrow night.
Oh, we do?
Tune in, it'll be fun to watch.
I'll be delayed here, I'm just kidding.
Don't wait.
Don't wait. I'll be delayed, don't wait.
We'll adjourn to tomorrow night, January 19th at 6:00 PM.